I'm here. No. They, I, um, I think, I'll say.
I'm curious how efficient they were.
If you do a right, we're supposed to be east. Yeah. Like I said, I think I'm, I'm going in the office of the shop when I get it built. If you do a right, they look nice. But this.
Yeah.
Up around the corner of the S Road.
Yeah.
No, that's not what you do. Just kind of squirting them out from, you know, just.
Do you see that turp is deep out there?
Oh.
Great. She's just back there.
Oh, yeah.
It's all her.
It's just that.
No.
Good morning. How are you? Yes.
Yes.
Good morning, buddy.
How are you?
Everybody's been having a late.
Hey, good. Doing great.
You're right on time.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, you signed today, I can publish your paper today. I'm not forgetting this paper.
Yeah. I mean, that's about me here. Okay. Sometime, sometime we can pay a lot.
Well, are you, just to be sure. So, are you mayor of the city? So, I'll come back and see. I knew I had enough.
As of right now, maybe they. Both of those things. Or it's bad. Or it's good. So. Can't publish two weeks? Okay, so, I have a good five.
I'm gone this week.
Yes, we did hear some.
Are you gone on the eighteen? Are you gone on the eighteen?
What, what was the question?
About to hear.
And I'll be talking about doing it after. It's got to be done before September.
Well, I just think about it two times before you.
That's like the, the last, what's the last thing?
Let's, let's talk about this one, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Just trying to hear what he has to talk about. All right, I got ninety blocks, don't need more, please leave. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Hey, we need to set a date for the hearing for the, uh, budget. And. What is the date that we have to have it done, have to have it done by, Chris?
The first Monday.
The first Monday of October, okay, so we can go into September then. Okay, so, Christie's gonna be gone the week of twenty fifth, you're gonna be gone.
Of August.
Of August, you're gonna be gone the week of the eighteenth.
And so, I would, I would prefer that we just do it in, in September.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what I'm, I'm looking at, trying to get it done then.
But you could publish it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can publish it.
Yeah, we, we need to go and get published, you know, so we can get that taken care of and that where there's no snatches there. But then, uh, so the week of September, uh, any time in September then. So.
You want to know about. What night of the week?
Just for our meeting.
That'd be right.
I didn't tell me you guys wanted to do a night.
Probably, probably better do it as a night meeting, if public fans come in, yeah, that's the way that I would prefer to do it. So, uh, I would prefer to do it on like a Thursday, I think that's kind of an open night for people. For the public, Wednesday night's kind of a jerk night, so, uh, either like the fourth, the eleventh of the eighteen. As of right now, I have nothing going there. There's a long, there's a long ways out. Pick one. What do you guys think, uh, you want to give plenty of notice, if we publish it on the sixth, the thirteenth, what you got?
One of the last two days will be done.
One of the last two days of the month?
The eleventh and the eighteenth.
Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and do it on the eleventh? That way we'll get that set, get it out of the way and be done with it.
At what time?
Seven. I'd say seven. One thing we probably should have been doing tonight, and I haven't been, but we can start now, as of today. What I'd like us to do is to approve the agenda as written. And then we may add to it or subtract from it, or whatever we can do that, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'd like to then add to the agenda.
Sure.
Conversation about, uh, resolution, uh, twenty twenty, whatever it was.
Twenty fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, I'd like to add that in.
Twenty twenty five, sixteen.
Yes. Twenty fifteen.
So, we'll put that down under county councilor.
That's right.
Sound good? Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second. Is the problem moved and seconded to approve the agenda as written, all in favor, say aye. Aye, or opposed, same sign, motion carried. We don't have anything else, so I can take it up if Christie goes up. So, let's go ahead and go through the bridge, Luke, you gotta come on up.
How are you?
I'm fine.
How you doing, buddy?
Good.
What you got?
Well, I prepared a statement so that I could cover it all.
When you're finished with it, would you give it to the court so we can have it for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here today speaking on behalf of myself. But in the last election, my name was written in as the banner township, Chrissy. I had no idea what that was when I got the notice to be sworn in. I asked what the position was, and it was told it means nothing, the commissioners want to do away with it. I disagree with that, and would like to start a conversation about utilizing township boards as a way to effectively communicate with the road bridge and the commissioners. I'd be glad to discuss that further if time allows, but my main objective here today is the road conditions in Vaner Township, most specifically the chip and seal portion of K Road. K Road has been chip and sealed since Rock Quarry was there. It was never a perfect road, but it was about like all the rest of the county chip and seal roads. It had asphalt patches, overlying the potholes or blowouts, as you now call them. I would say that thirty percent of the road was affected. Sometime last year, the road department took some asphalt that was too thin for the project they were on, and applied it to the southern portion with a pump through a four or six inch hose, just spraying it out. There was no attempt to smooth out these roads, and what was left was asphalt wash floors. Around that time, it was announced that K Road was on the list for chip and sealing. I hoped that it would repair the damaged area. Then, earlier this summer, one county employee and three temporary employees spent between four and six weeks putting down oil and chip rock over the bad spots in the road with that same machine. They covered the entire mile and a half, but not in its entirety. The result was a disaster. This was two instances of taking a loose material that is intended to harden, laying it in roads and piles over an already hardened surface. No attempt was made to smooth out these raised bumps. It was affecting over ninety percent of the road. I contacted the road and bridge office at the end of May and asked what they were doing. I was told it wasn't finished. Not satisfied, I contacted Commissioner Pruitt on June first and said they are screwing up the road, and if not checked on, it will forever be harmed. At the next meeting, he stated he got a call about K Road. He was told nothing has been done for years with that road, and they're patching bad spots, and it isn't finished, but should be better when it is. As I continued to drive past them, putting down more and more bumps in the road, I knew it wasn't going to end well. On July eighteenth, after a portion of K Road was completed, it was obvious my fears were coming true. I contacted both commissioners, Pruitt and Kelly, so that someone else knew of my concerns. I stated in both my correspondences that I don't like to complain about roads, but this cannot go on. At the next meeting, Commissioner Pruitt stated he got another call on K Road, and he went and drove it at fifty-five mile an hour in his one ton truck. And yes, it is rough, but it's not a super highway. The public works director's response was that it isn't finished, but what county road isn't rough? The issue is that now it is worse, that we spent all of that money than it was before we started. I tried to identify the problem before it became unfixable, but now it is completed, and it is not better. I asked two questions in advance of today, so I hope someone has the answers. How much does it cost to chip and seal one mile? And how much did we spend on the prep work on K Road that made it so bad? K Road is one of three roads in the county that goes from a parallel to the southern end of the county. Two of those are major roads that go all the way to Highway twenty-four. K Road gets a lot of traffic. There are many out of county farmers that rent land on the reservation that drive heavy equipment down it. It gets a lot of heavy semi traffic. Less than two weeks after the chip and seal was completed, there's already a blowout of the southern area. When a heavy load bounces over the bumps, the compression will cause the road to deteriorate faster. Yesterday, after one tenth of an extra rain, there were puddles all over it. What will it be like after a snowplow goes across all the bumps? I would like the four of you to travel the road together at or below the posted speed limit and decide if this is the standard the county will accept. None of our chip and seal roads are good, but this one was self-implanted. Short of grinding it smooth and starting over, the only way I know to fix it is to lay down another layer of chip and seal thick enough that it can be bladed or rolled smooth and cover up the bumps. To say I'm disappointed in the response I got to my concerns is an understatement, and goes back to my thoughts on having active township boards to assist with road conditions and concerns. I think it would be wildly popular and would alleviate some stress on the commissioners, because having only three people covering all of that area is too much. The commissioners can allocate the money to the townships, and the township can decide how best to spend it. We could use our budget for more rock instead of buying a new blade if the old one is still good. We could be financially responsible for our own area and not have one person making decisions they will never have to drive on. I have a few other questions concerning the rest of Vaner Township roads. Do all areas of the county have a dedicated blade? Does Vaner Township have one? If so, where is it? Most of our roads have been bladed very few times in the last couple of years, and others not at all unless for snow removal. We pay taxes too, and deserve to have our roads maintained. After all, if you don't maintain them, they cost more to repair, as is the case currently with most of them. Water can't get to the ditch, and it's cutting rust down the middle of the road, but even if we had a blade, there's no material to fill the bad spots. As Commissioner Pruitt stated last week, we need to clean the edges of the roads so the water can get off them. If our roads only get bladed a couple times a year, a year, what are the rest of the county blades doing all year long? While I agree that county roads are not highways and should be driven accordingly, the current administrative arrangement is not working for us. Now that we are spending fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars a year to know precisely where our blades are, I guess we will know how few times Vaner Township roads get maintained. As has been evident with the last few meetings, road concerns are not being taken seriously. Far too many times when you have a concern, the answer is, I'll have to check on that and get back to you, or I looked at it and I don't see the problem. Does anyone ever get back to you, or do you follow up? For instance, the concern on S Road where there's a depression on both sides of the two, causing a hump in the road. The response was essentially that it will cost a lot to fix it, and the roads are gonna be rough. If it was done correctly the first time, it wouldn't need correction. I appreciate Commissioner, Commissioner Kelly's comments to that effect last week. I think that some type of township maintenance agreement would help with that. One public works director and three commissioners simply cannot take care of the entire county road issues affected. Thank you for allowing me to address my concerns, and I don't need to answer my questions.
You want to go in with the, uh, thought analysis that you had prepared?
Yep, uh, we have this. Uh, chip and seal is around thirty thousand dollars a mile, twelve miles, uh, for this year, and for the ferries and, uh, light route. And a thousand eight seventy-four. Somebody.
For the passion.
Who has got sixty thousand dollars on that road, mile pack? Is that correct? Or is that more?
No, it was thirty thousand per mile, so forty, I bet I was. And. Half, over half of that was making it worse. It would have been more cost effective to have done twice as opposed to all the patches, in my opinion.
You know, there are different ways that we can look to, to patch. That road had some pretty wide cracks in it all the way down through there. That's why you're getting the bumps across here, here again, like I say, I drove it again this morning on my motorcycle. I, if, if you take and drive two fifty-four between seventy-five and Circleville and drive your road on K Road, and tell me which ones works?
They're both bad.
I understand.
The problem is, is that it wasn't that way before.
But if we just chip and sealed over the cracks, and it's gonna still, it's gonna keep cracking for this thing, so you know, there are different ways that we can look to approach the.
I'm just saying, we spent a lot of money and made the road worse. And yes, two fifty-four is a very well traveled road. K Road is highly traveled road, and it's a short stretch, but my concern is that. There wasn't, when I first started this discussion in the beginning, there was no.
there wasn't, when I first started this discussion in the beginning, there was no communication to say, are we doing the right thing? As was stated last week, are we doing the right thing when we do this? It could have been stopped halfway through or as soon as I got started and said, is this the right way? Are we making this road better?
This, okay, well, as of right now, that's the only way that we have to patch. What I'm saying is there are different things that we can look at for patching the wide cracks, which is coming up with the money for a tar machine or hiring it out for a tar machine to patch it halfway. You're still gonna have bumps. There's no way to get around it.
What about the asphalt at the back end, at the south end that was poured on there and just dumped, dumped out and...
I, I was not aware of that. We never said anything about that. We were talking about the patching and that's where I...
No, I said at the beginning...
No, I know, but you, I never heard about that until right now. I didn't know anything about that.
I didn't say anything because it was announced that it was gonna be chip and sealed and I was hoping that that would fix it. I didn't realize that the chip was laid in such a thin layer that it goes right over the bumps. It doesn't smooth anything out. You know, if there's a two inch hole or an inch and a half tall ridge where that material was laid, the chip goes right over the top of it. And it just does this the entire time you drive down it. It's just this. You saw the video.
And I think, I think the point that Luke's getting at is that and I've said this before, is we've gotta monitor what's being done out there while it's being done, not being reactive once and stuff. And, and Scott, we've talked about this, that that sending one guy out there and three, three southern guys that were hired, you know, off the street as helpers. Is there a better technique that we can use? I mean, how many times did you visit the site when he was working on it or did Matt go out and visit the site and look at it and go, I think this is gonna work or this isn't gonna work?
We'll be able to look at it. The rock is just smooth across there. Once the, because when you spray it, the rock spreads out, uh, so you don't feel the bumps when you're out there.
But if there's no tack oil, that the only place it stays is in that one strip, correct?
Correct. And what he did out there this year, I mean, he was spraying that tack oil like through eight thousand gallons of oil.
Right. So is there a better technique than doing that? Uh, spending that much money just as, is there another technique that can be done as opposed to, like Luke said, could we have just sprayed the entire road twice and got a better result than...
Chip and seal doesn't do that. Chip and seal just seals the road for moisture. It does not smooth it, flatten it or anything. Asphalt does.
But what Luke is saying, it's worse after the, the patching. And what I'm saying is if had we tack oiled it and just laid chip rock on it and done two layers of that, would it have been better? It, it makes, it makes me wonder if, you know, wouldn't, I'm not out there. That's, that's not where I'm at, uh, when you're doing that. I think we just need to look at some different techniques to what we're doing. So, because these chip, I mean, you know, these chip and seal roads, when they were built, they were never built to handle the traffic, especially the heavy semi traffic. They just blow apart and they, it, it's horrible. I think I shared with you, we applied for a thirty-two million dollar grant. I just got an email back from, uh, the guy that's doing the grant work for us. And we're gonna reapply for it this year. Our goal would be to take those main thoroughfares that are like K Road and go in and floor those if they have a good enough base, then we'll go in and we'll put asphalt over the top of those. It would be cheaper to maintain those, those asphalt roads. It's just so expensive. We, as a county, we can't afford to put six inches of asphalt. That's a ways down the road, but that's, that's something we're trying to work on is to get a grant to do some of these main roads where, where farm traffic, semi traffic can come out, because that's the majority of our tractor trailer is, is grain hoppers. Where they can get out to seventy-five highway. Short of that, we go in, there's a process where they could go in with a giant, I call it giant road tiller. They just, they, they bill up what's there and go back to gravel. They wet it, they pack it and turn it out. That's not cheap. And that turned out really well. The process works well. And that may be something we just have to do because spending sixty plus thousand dollars a year or every three years on some of these roads doesn't, doesn't make sense.
It's gonna get worse due to the five year road condition, not three. And now it's changed because I did, it's a ten year road condition. So that road will be tested.
It hasn't been touched for ten years other than patching.
Other, other than patching and resealing.
In fact, in twenty twenty-two is when we started, we started doing the first thing.
So that may be a process we look at. How would you feel about milling that up and, and basically they go in, they mill it damn deep and they back in, they wet it, shape it, roll it, cheap swivel it and then roll it smooth?
Well, my personal opinion is that we can fix a rock through, we can't fix the chip and seal road. I don't live on that stretch. I live south of it. Those that do live on it will appreciate the lack of dust.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I'm here speaking for myself, not for anyone who does live there, but I, I mean, I don't know the...
The alternative to that would be also if it was milled up, put back into a gravel road, dust control for about seven to eight thousand dollars.
Six, about six thousand.
Six thousand. That's a possibility. I like dust control because I, dust control holds the road together. You know, it's, it's, if you look at it, the way, the way it works, it draws the moisture out of the air to hold the dust around the gravel. You've gotta have aggregate gravel from the the dust together to hold it together. I think it works well.
And it's cheaper than chip and seal?
It's much cheaper than chip and seal.
So this is what I spent my extra year on the sixth, uh, that was on my grind.
What, what was that number just for the audience?
Fifty-one, six, thirty-six.
To grind up, was that a mile and a half?
It's two miles.
Two miles, yeah.
That's the grinding, the rock, the paper. Grinding, grinding, that's two miles and more, seventy-five, eighty-five.
And that was the only thing we stepped out, was that to put in?
Definitely, that's asphalt. And then they supplied the operator and then our, our crew.
And so just to take this conversation another step. So in order to get enough guys down there, what we typically have to do is we have to pull guys off their routes. And I don't like doing that because you've talked, you just talked about that. When you pull Brandon Hundley off your route out there for weeks to do a project, it, it, it's not good. Things fall apart quick. And so trying to figure out how to balance enough employees to do projects like the one we're talking about and keeping them busy year round without pulling blade operators off their route is a struggle because you don't wanna hire a full-time employee and then the winter when there's, you know, you can't be doing special projects, what do you do with them? So it's a balance. We're trying to figure that out. But I think we're getting to a point where we have enough guys in the Matt's crew, that's basically a special projects group and they can do it all, basically, that our goal is to not pull people off their route to do projects.
We've got twelve blades. We actually have, uh, Paul Melvin out in the twelfth blade right now going around the field.
Any, any signs of Vaner Township? I mean, honestly, I haven't seen them. Dale came over a few, or a week ago and did one ninety-eight road. He comes in and hits a little spot here and there, but from the roads between K and N, I don't think they've been touched since the snow.
Thoughts on that? Any, any indication of whether that's been done?
I guess so.
In, in... In your comment, you, you're right. We spent some money on, on the GPS. It will help us be able to track where these blades are because we'll be able to see that, that, that machine is running at four P M at three mile an hour. And typically when they're four P M and three mile an hour, they've got their blade in, they're, they're blading.
We'll be able to monitor that their blade is down also.
We'll be able to track that and have a better indication of that because we ran into a situation down on one fifty-eight that I just addressed this past week. And some of it is educating some of these blade operators. Young man who's doing a good job. He's learned. He's really trying hard. But he was breaking his district up into four districts and he would just go this one, this one, this one and this one. That doesn't work. And we had that conversation. Then you have main roads, you have secondary roads, then you have minimum main roads. Those main roads, one fifty-eight, at least the first two miles east of Mayetta, has got to be maintained more often than say, for instance, S Road between one fifty-eight and one forty-two. I use these roads because I know them. I consider them my district. And so it's, part of it is educating some of these guys, uh, that that's what needs to be done. And then the second part that I addressed with Scott was then holding them accountable. Someone has to be holding them accountable, making sure that that's being done. I believe the software and the GPS will give us a better tool. It's just a tool to, to be able to monitor that. Will actually be able to monitor as commissioners, will have access to that?
And, and then one of the, one of the things about being a good blade operator is public relations.
Absolutely.
We're not allowed to stop them and ask, I mean, if, if they're on the road and we know something's over here needs, could you, I need to get down that with my swat. Can you go fix that road? We're not allowed to do that anymore. They don't want us to stop and talk because now they're on camera and they're on GPS and they don't... I think that that takes away a little bit of the public relations part of it.
They're, they're not on camera.
It's a front-facing camera.
And one, one, yes, and it's front-facing camera. One of the things that, one of the reasons that we went to that, the operators not stopping is because the number of times that they've been threatened and yelled at and screamed at. That was one of the reasons that we did. We said, you know, this is, this is not a thing that's gonna happen. Do your job and get it.
Right. But the, the route that I have to go through to get a pothole repaired, when I could have just stopped, which I can't because we don't ever have anybody around, I, I mean, Dale comes in, he's just here and gone. You know, I can't say, hey, can you go over and fix L four road?
So how do we make that connection between the community and, and those types of situations better?
I, that's where I think the township board, the township trustee, to have, have the township have a way to communicate within themselves and then that person, excuse me.
Sure.
And then communicate with either Road and Bridge so that we can itemize what our priorities are.
And we talked about this a little bit last week. I wanna go back just, just a little bit. So four and a half years ago, we set up a process where we encourage folks to call in to Road and Bridge. And if you've got a concern about a road, they log it and then they color code it so that we know if Luke calls in giant pothole or the bridge, okay, it's logged somewhere permanently so that the commissioners can see it, but it also helps Road and Bridge prioritize. Okay, that, that would be something we need to get out and take care of right now. Though this may be something we can get to in a couple of weeks because we're on a project. Uh, but I think we need to take it a step further and figure out how do we make that connection between the blade operator and the community? I've always said I want, my goal as commissioner is to make the environment good enough that when you meet a blade operator, he wave, you, you, the people in the community wave at him with all five fingers. We're not there yet.
And with technology, maybe you put it on, on a website where you can track concerns. I mean, it's, okay, here's a red dot on this one and then next week that red dot's gone.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Something that people can look at and really, I don't like concerns. It's on there.
Then, then let's move ahead to the, to the townships. I'm not sure with all the townships that we have in this county, other than lumping some of them together to create a larger township board. Because if you look at some of the townships, they just don't have enough housing and that type of thing. They're, they're...
It would be difficult.
A lot of roads and not a lot of people.
And I think, and I don't know the, the answer of why however many years ago Jackson County left from being a township form government to a county single building.
I heard it was back sometime in the early sixties.
Yeah, I, I don't know the issue.
But then they tried a few years ago to get township boards again and it didn't work. I can't tell you how many years ago, but I know Kathy worked hard at trying to get, you know, people to vote on township boards because that was an idea and they couldn't get the people to serve.
Yeah, because they...
Well, I got written in, so.
Well, and, and we had that, we had that conversation here at the, at the last election. Why is that still on there? Another guy down in Douglas, he asked the same question. That's just didn't, never been taken off the ballot. Kathy, I'm, Christie, let you explain to them what the process is and why that's never been done, if you have, have an explanation.
I think it was probably because Kathy was trying to get her state of the mind.
Okay.
But we still have it out there and if you get voted in, we don't have any active townships. So there's really nothing for anyone to do that gets put in that position.
But if, but if someone tries to put something in to do alcohol or something, the town, the township people have to gather to vote on that. They have to try to appoint township people to go, if it's gonna be in your area. That's why it's really there.
So I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with, you know, having some conversation about it. I, I think it would be interesting to see where that conversation goes. We can have Todd or legal look into what that process is. Can we combine three townships that don't have a lot of population together so that they have, you know, equal funding? Can we just give each township equal funding? Because each township is going to have the ability to have their own mill levy. And so if you feel like you need to raise money, you could, you could do that and Christie, correct me, but the mill levy would be based on a valuation within your township, correct? So county valuation is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand per mill. That wouldn't be the same case in, say, Vaner Township. It may be thirty-one thousand. I don't know. But see, that, that's what I'm saying. So you have to determine, you know, what you can, how many mills and how you're gonna, if you're gonna be the taxing authority in that township and you're gonna have to deal with community members in that, in that area. But I think it warrants a conversation. I, me personally, it's one big...
It's just that when sometimes one township doesn't get anything because it's all has to go to another and we, you know, because this is our budget, we're gonna spend it all in here and fix this, but then, you know, the other one's left and I get, you know, there's certain townships. Vaner Township doesn't have fifty, how, fifty homes or could be seventy-five. It's not a lot, but...
We tried to do, so when we, the commissioners worked with Scott, to look out over the next several years at project roads. We look, each of us individually, we look in our community along with their input and along with the, the operators in those areas. What roads do you see that need to be completely rebuilt? We, we try to develop that and then we try to spend the money equally. We don't look at population. We don't, we don't say, well, Vaner doesn't have very many houses. We don't need to spend, we don't do that. We try to attack the roads that, that are really in bad shape and build from there. I think we've done that over the last several years. It just doesn't happen fast enough and I, and I get it. But we're also limited in funds.
Right.
I mean, we've got...
It's not getting any better.
Yeah, it's not getting any better, especially when gravel's gone twice in one year in six months.
Right. And we've spent the gravel budget in this budget.
Yeah.
It's probably the ground budget cut by, what?
Three hundred.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Do you care if I share with them or... Okay. So I, I do wanna share with you guys in the community something that's gonna be coming up, that you're going to have the opportunity to vote on. And right now we have a point zero four percent sales tax. So everything that's sold in this county, we get a portion of that. Each incorporated city also gets a portion of that. Each incorporated city also gets a portion of that. What we're asking the legislature to do is move from point zero four to point zero five, one ten percent. And it would be, we would get the entire amount of sales tax. And that would go to gravel and gravel all of it. So we, we say we can, we can only spend that money on one thing. So then that's gonna bring in, I think we figured, based on the numbers today, hundred, maybe hundred twenty thousand dollars a month additional money by doing that. Of that money, twenty five to thirty percent of it's gonna be paid for by people who are coming into this community that don't live here and buy stuff. We think it's a good way to generate more money. So then we would have the potential of lowering the ad valorem tax with the, the bill, the, what we budget for gravel because we can increase what we're getting in sales tax. That takes the burden off the taxpayer uh in the community and generates more revenue. I think it's a good idea, but we've gotta, it's gotta be sold to the community uh because they've gotta come in and vote on that. So anyway, I just wanted to share that with you guys, that's, that's some of the, none of this stuff goes fast though. It frustrates me because I would like to have the ability, I as a commissioner and the other two commissioners, to immediately do that. But no, the legislature says you have to ask permission of the legislature. So we have to start this process, uh we'd have to get a sponsor. For instance, our, Eric Camp has done that, he's always helped us with that. But then it has to go through the legislature. Then you have to wait and then you have to vote on it.
It is, it's usually at the end of the legislative session that before they ever sort workout it and then vote until they decide whether or not they're gonna do it. It's usually one of the last things they do for any of this. The hospital was one of the last ones they did. Uh there is a, so it was pushed to legislature last year from the Kansas Association of Counties to do a way with the permission asking of the legislature for the counties to put to a vote for a sales tax. It, it gained a lot of footing in there, but towards the end of session, it got pushed to the back burner and never seen again. So that's, that's another thing that we're looking at bringing forward again, Kansas Association of Counties is getting that done. Because a lot of legislatures are saying, why are we doing this? Why, why are we looking at this? Why, what the county's doing, they need to do, why are we having to do through the legislature? So that's, that's something's gonna come about hopefully soon. We'll keep our fingers crossed.
But I think we can do a better job of, of maybe figuring out a way to allow the community to communicate with Roden Bridge and so that they can see what's going on. Maybe there's a way that we can visit with the staff out there, that they can publish this on their Facebook page and show the road concerns and then, I, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but I think there's a better way of doing it. How do we fix the problem that you see out there? I'm not sure. I'd like to, please guys for a three, three of them after lunch today, run out there and let's just take a look at it. I'd love to.
Right, I have a follow up.
No, that'd be great.
To me, we have one of these bays that are just like super, super hot and all the asphalt's hot. What would we do if we rent a roller out there and rent a roller, probably put it flat and some of that? I don't know.
Worth a try?
I hate to put money at it if it doesn't, but you know, it doesn't cost much to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know if it, if I hate to say a scareifier, but they, you know, but to loosen that up and then lay it soon. I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer, I just don't believe that what is there isn't correct.
And then I think the other thing we need to look at is our approach and how we're maintaining uh these roads. Is it, is it worth the money that we're spending on? There are some places, I drive around on these chip and seal roads sometimes. And we're just throwing money away. So that's a conversation that we need to have as a group and bring somebody in who can take a, somebody who is outside of one of these companies that we have. Because I'll be honest, we, we, we hire a company, they're low bid. Last one was Vance Brothers, what, years ago, out of Kansas City? And then they get bought up. And something, let's go try it back up. You know, so let's try to find somebody uh who can maybe give us some, there's an LPAP who is a state uh organization that will come in and help evaluate, they have engineers. Maybe they would have some technique that, that would be helpful. I know that doesn't solve the problem, but it sounds like maybe we can at least run out there and try to take.
It's difficult to, on a road when there's no material, in order to get something to fill a pothole, they gotta cut down the edge and then it leaves a lip at the grass and then the water gets in, runs down, that's it.
But I think, you know, they're supposed to, they're supposed to not be doing that. And so they're supposed to be rolling that off or rolling that back and forth across the road when it's really, really dry. Let the grass die out and then bring it back in. Uh because it, it drives me nuts too, if you have a secondary ditch that ends up there.
But everybody wants to mow the road.
So where do you, so, so where do you find that balance with the?
You have to fix the road first.
That's correct. And we've given the blade operators permission to go into these ditches and clean them, roll it up on the bank in some situations, some situations it needs to be hauled off, some situations it needs to be put back in the road. There's not a one fix, one solution to fixing all the problems. It just depends on the area you're in and what you have. Some places down there on one fifty eight, there was a lot of gravel in that back slope. So they pulled that out, blended it into the road and put a little bit of new gravel at the top.
And just one other thought that I've had over the years, and I don't know what, how cost effective it would be, but we can round up along the road edges to, I know they want the grass to keep the ditch from washing, but you know, or like a mud road in the minimum maintenance. They go down a mud road to try to knock the grass down. Would it be more cost effective to just kill the grass and leave the road alone? Because they're.
We've talked about that.
Lots of, sure, grass and dirt and moving, you know.
We can do some calculation, but we have actually talked about that, that it would be more efficient to spray the first two foot off the edge of the road. If you're gonna do that, you might as well put a pre-emergent with it and prevent it from coming back too. So.
And then you have all the corn, beans and the marijuana.
And then you have, everybody, you know, they hear that and they go, oh, it drifted, you killed my tree, you killed my this, you killed my that. Then you have people who have, um, you have people that have noxious weed that won't even allow that to be sprayed. You know, you know how that, it's less of these that just kills you in the pasture, but when your neighbor won't spray it.
Right.
So there's those issues that you're supposed to address on that.
I won't take up any more time, I appreciate the conversation.
So if I reach back out to you, try to maybe gather some information where maybe we can gather some community members, come together, have an open conversation, I'd be glad to facilitate it and have just some conversation about the township thing. Uh I'll try to gather some numbers and what the rules are and what the laws is we can and can't do and what we have to do. Maybe you can organize some folks to come together, we can have that conversation. I can't promise anything, but I'd be glad to work on it. That's.
I have, appreciate that.
I know a guy down in Douglas, he's, he's, he wants to be involved in it. He actually sat on a township board in Shawnee County. Uh so he has a lot of good knowledge, I picked his brain quite a bit on it. Um I think he would be involved in, in that conversation too.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thanks, Lou, appreciate it. Uh it's so good to hear your comments, yeah, thank, thank you, thank you, appreciate your comments, sir. See y'all, thanks for coming.
And I do want you guys to know before you leave, we are gonna have a conversation about the resolutions that was passed here a few weeks ago. So just, just for your information.
Thanks.
Yeah.
What you got?
Okay. Was talking about trying to find a new seat service bucket, did find one, uh I, uh they're serving their last money and uh quite far down here. So that's a two bucket, two feet, three minutes, thirty, thirty. They were on sale, so they just turned them upside down and re-shipping them. I went to check some tickets though, they don't let you pull them up or. Talked to Billy Price, he's the super gent down here in Troy and we talked about some different things, so it's a bird problem and things like that. He brought up that on one fifty eight road, there's three bridges that has got some concerns. And then one hundred and eighty two, saw them for those last week, got some pictures here. We're back to these are roads that we say they maintain and they said these bridges aren't on the register. So here we are again, four more expensive bridges uh that have concerns. Yeah, who's, who's supposed to maintain them, there's been inspections.
At, at the end of the day, there are responsibilities. But again, we, we have not been inspecting them, we have not been doing maintenance on them because our impression was that it's this on the road they made them.
On one fifty eight, is it the, the uh asphalt road going that way that's got the bridges on or?
It's a, it's a, it was here uh one is east of, or west of L, one is west of K, and one is west of H.
So it would be going back to the west. So then I guess we gave, we gave them permission to maintain them, to asphalt them and take care of them. So to me, that would imply that they're supposed to take care of all of them, not just what they pick and choose to take care of. Am I, am I wrong in assuming that?
Sorry, I was in tech mode.
For what Scott was saying, they're saying that the bridges that are on one hundred and fifty eight are not theirs. But we gave them permission, they came to us and asked permission to asphalt the road, they take care of the road, but they say the bridges aren't theirs. So, you know, can they, can they pick and choose what they wanna do? That's one of the bridges?
Yeah, so I get it. Yes, they can until somebody challenges it.
Yeah, I, I don't know the foothold you'd have because the, the general thing isn't that specific. Meaning you have a right of way, you don't necessarily go down the green and be killed with, with, you know. You know, it's just a regular road, is it a culvert, is it?
It's the bridge, it's the bridge on this road.
Yeah, well, I don't think there's a distinction in kind of a road ownership concept of whether it's a bridge. You know, it's still just the right, you know, it's just a different kind of right.
So then if we, if tomorrow we decide, well, we don't like that asphalt anymore and we take, go hire somebody to take the grinder and drive it up? Is that, I mean, does?
Yeah, it is, you have, what's, the differences is a violation of a contract or is it an illegal right? Okay, we don't.
There's still a contract.
Oh, maybe that's a road itself?
They came and asked permission to, oh, this happened before me, but they came and asked permission to.
This was in the uh, what, what year, say what year, but they asked that current commissioners if they could take over some of the maintenance of the roads. Because they wanted to go and put asphalt in. They have the ability to get all these federal grants, but we don't.
Nobody ever required that to be put into writing?
It gets in the minutes and, and it was put into writing, but they never signed it. I've seen the document, they never signed it, it never went through the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So, you know, technically it is still ours to maintain, but we don't have to maintain it at the level that they think it should be.
Well, I mean, I think the question becomes kind of what that the nature is of the differing rights. I mean, two kinds, ownership over here and contract or agreement. So that's just, you know, ten thousand per year. So you don't think that there's no ownership. Therefore, the, all the rights that get is whatever the agreement is. Now, can you create an agreement by what we call a stopple with the government in generally? It's not, I mean, if you write down an agreement and get it out there and they don't sign it, but everybody kind of does it, that's what we call an agreement by a stop. I mean, if you're performing on the agreement, then you preach, right? You're doing what it says, legally it's signed it, you're being held accountable. But, I mean, that's for people. Now, when the government does that, they say the government can't do a stop. I mean, because the legislative body essentially every however many years changes over to somebody else, you can't be held to what they did before unless it's in writing, right? So, you know, so at that point, both sides are kind of at a, at a lagerist because really there isn't any agreement except what you guys have set on a day-to-day basis legally. So as long as you guys say, well, you know, it doesn't hurt us to have them, you know, asphalt that road. And if they don't get any ownership rights, they don't get any ownership rights, it's just gonna.
Yeah, because when they, when they started the, the project out here on one fifty eight, they had to have us sign off on and what the federal government required us to sign off on because we held the right of way.
Yeah.
But if we would stand the reason that, okay, if that bridge is bad and they're getting ready because that's gonna be phase two or three or four or whatever of this thirty seven million dollar project, if the bridge is bad, they need to fix it. If they're gonna require, if they're going to ask us to fix it so they can asphalt over, there's probably gonna be a problem.
Well, yeah, since there's nothing specific saying you have to do that, either in agreement or otherwise, and yeah, the fault would be, sorry, it's just not, you know, by the button, not planned, whatever it is, you know. And, and they can't claim that, is that right?
Are, are they, I mean, what do you see on it? I mean, are they just starting to, the concrete start to break up?
Yeah, some of the concrete, I'm not necessarily concerned with, uh the three bridges on, uh what could say. Not necessarily concerned about the concrete on the bridge, you know, some of it's, the deck, underneath, some of it's slapping off along the edges, which happens when you get salted.
Sure.
Uh my concern is how much is washed out of that region above its glitter and down the sides.
Consider, they have a brick wrap in there to protect that bit?
One, couple of them have big, I mean, big pulp, brick wrap under there. But it's still going down the sides and needing to be wiped. Then when you get to the, uh the pillars that's holding the bridge up, but down here, uh there's some that's, well, it's. Uh that, that's the one on one eighty two. That's mine. I don't know, these are all rotated, so, like there's a water line, see, that's one of the pillars that's coming down into the water. And that dirt used to be up about thirty four feet, it's down and you got pretty large hanging out down there. So that thing's just kind of, to me, it's hanging there uh from the bridge that. Uh and here's another shot of it. And you see how all the, the dirt, how thick it is on the backside? And all the dirt was washed away, and I was just seeing around there. This is up underneath the abutment where you have the road up here and then you see the abutment on the back, I mean, and everyone's washed out of there, uh one down East Road two years ago, it's kind of, we had to go in there, dirt from a hard mess going there.
Yeah, my deal.
Yeah. Uh to do twelve of those bills, but by then, I'm saying you can see that's, and there is very crap, I'm sure it's not.
I guess my suggestion would be reach back out to them and say, we'll be glad to hire an engineer, if he can come out and give us uh what we need to do to correct this. to hire an engineer, if he can come out and give us what we need to do to correct this, but you're going to pay for it, tribe's going to pay for it. If we have to pay for it, it's probably not going to happen. Because, do we know any dates on these bridges, when they were installed?
When they were last inspected?
Again, I don't know.
So the installations will be, because prior to 158th being asphalt, it was just this gravel road heading west out there. Um, and so I think when they didn't allow this asphalt work, why did that road have all these bridges for this place? So that's, that's information number one that I would want, is when were they replaced and who paid for it? And then, again, the conversation would be, we'll be glad to hire somebody to do it, but you're going to have, we're going to require $25,000 deposit upfront before we hire an engineer to come out, we'll, we'll have it inspected, but you're going to pay the bill for all of it. Otherwise, leave like they are. We're not the ones that got, who had the ability to get $32 million grant. Maybe they should have used some of that $32 million to fix the bridges prior to putting new asphalt on, but maybe that would have been a thought.
158th, if you want to look the rest up again, this 158th, oh, what's the road? You can see how all the dirt up underneath it is washed out?
We didn't put that bridge in.
Oh, well. But again, it's just, it's just...
It's the period off the edge.
Off the edge. And how it's made out behind it and in front of it. There's the abutment up there, and you can see how the water just went off the road and running straight down.
Lack of maintenance there.
So Tom, I guess that would go back to my original question. If we did not put these bridges in and the tribe did, that would, that would make them the owners of the bridge, correct?
Wouldn't make them the owners, it would make them responsibility for the maintenance.
For the maintenance.
Questions, but again, they're telling me it's not on their inventory list. So, I just found this variety, so I have to go back and check and see if they're on our inventory list at all. Uh, if not, then we're right back to the 182th bridge thing.
I mean, I don't think it's terribly clear to me that the maintenance is falling. And when they installed the bridge or thing, were there still on that?
I don't know yet.
Like I said, if I can check.
It doesn't appear because of the construction of that bridge that that was the bridge that we would have put in.
Okay.
What information do you need to make that determination on where we need to go with this?
Well, probably we just need to see that whatever we're talking about, the bridge probably had it somewhere.
But that one you had to walk back, back to 95, roughly, gentleman's agreement.
No, it was...
No, that was one that didn't get signed by, signed off by, your Indian spirit or anything?
I may have, I'll do some research, see if I can find it, otherwise we'll have to go back. Tara did a really good job of going through those minutes and found that, I think initially.
Yeah, it's, you might as well, at this point, is it? I don't know necessarily if there's kind of implication of ownership of the right of way, still best responsibility in the end of the day.
Sure.
So that's kind of where we get to...
It would come to nothing there.
Yeah, but if, if that's the case, it shouldn't dictate what kind, they shouldn't have the ability to dictate to us what kind of maintenance we do.
Yeah, it's one or the other, right? Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is they, the implication to that duty, which is that you own it and that you're in control of it and you can't, you know, third parties can't complain about essentially what you decided to do.
Now, the perfect example is 150th from Q Road over to the casino. They had to have our permission to put roadway lighting in there. We gave them permission, but it doesn't mean that we have to maintain that lighting or the life of it. There was possibility to maintain it.
Well, I think maybe the question in my mind is whether it's a safety issue or a convenience issue, meaning...
It's going to get to point, like 182th Bridge right now, it's close to being a safety issue, I mean, real close.
And that's, well, that, I'm concerned about the fact that ultimately that evolves back to you guys because that's the, I mean, it's, again, it's the ownership duty rather than the kind of, we get access.
Well, if that's the case, then it's a safety issue, then we can just close the bridge.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's correct answer to the safety problem. Either correction of it or closing it, so we can, I guess, correct it.
Or probably a $30,000 bridge.
And so, I said, you guys know what we need to close it?
I would like another opinion to kind of look at it. Like I said, that one, it's got two pillars underneath, and the one you saw, the pictures are, I mean, to me, it's just kind of hanging there, you know, it's not really, as it's important.
Is that fresh over, is that what I'm seeing? Or is that...
It's, all the pictures are sideways or something.
I understand, yeah, but I still see an eagle through there. Above, I mean, I mean, the...
Well, it's a field actually, it's, uh, that 182th, he survived. Now, that's the one. See, that looks, no, no, it's not... Again, turn, turn the picture, and then the concrete piece is going straight up and down.
Okay. What time did you...
That's not the leading, but it's... So is it consensus in the morning, one gets such, second opinion, second set of eyes on that, and determine what's going on with it?
Engineer, you're going to have to have an engineer come out, B D or whoever, have them out and take a look at all the bridges that you identified. But again, I would send the bill to run the bridge out there. And I would reach back out to Billy or whoever this supervisor is and say, here's what we're going to do, here's what it's going to cost, for engineers to come out and look at this. We're going to send you the bill, or you will, or are you going to pay it?
I, I would say that I won't, because again...
I want, I want the letter sent.
Okay.
Get the answer, say we're going to...
I want the denial sent back to us or be acceptable.
Yeah.
And again, if, you know, in that letter, if you might say like Mark did, that if this bridge gets bad enough, you're going to, we're, we're going to be forced to come down and close the road.
So we have to close 158th because of the bridges, and we'll do it?
Right now, 182th is one of them.
It's the worst, yeah.
The other ones are, that we have.
Yeah.
And then the one on K, necessarily the structure is more decked, we've got a bunch of holes in, uh, asphalt patch, you can repair that, or whatever.
Is it concrete?
Yes.
I'd check with an engineer whether asphalt's going to be an appropriate way to patch that, because it's...
It's just not, somebody's gone in and done it in the past, and it's blown out again. It's temporary.
Because a lot of times on bridge decking, you don't know what, it could look fine on the top, but the underneath side can be turtled out and it can only be made with Start with the letter and the conversation, maybe we'll be there.
The, uh, last week, we had the phone call back and forth about the giant communications and get those ends put on and things like that. Uh, they were very good, they came right out. Uh, the bill was going to be like $350 for it to get out there, and we got it out there and saw what we needed, so we discarded $100 for it, get a guy up there that same day and put the end on, and got it plugged in. So tomorrow, uh, a hell of a chromatics company is supposed to cut out and, uh, do the programming that they're playing on the fuel box, the fuel box, and the frame. So that is good.
We did get the box in, Mike.
Yes, the box is mounted and that is wired to it, it's up to them to plug everything in, provide them to...
Sure.
And it would have sort of been no disruptions, I think. Uh, we did a resolution here a while back on minimum maintenance roads, and we had some questions on, uh, got Tara in last week, we got, uh, I think it's just how we ride it up, uh, O Road for instance, over here, uh, 218 to 240, it's almost just like a driveway, so it's not rock, and we're up to the top of the hill, just right up the by the lane, there's a gate, and field out back. So on the ride up, like I would say, you know, O Road 218 to 240, it's stayed rock, O Road 240 to 242, we changed, we probably closed that, because it's up there. This is how I like to see it. Uh, Q4, uh, 150 to 142, we talked about before, coming in from 142 side, it's already signed up, it says road closed, there's a big pile of rock across it, coming in from 150, you can go about halfway down, and then it turns to the trees and the road, and it's a mess. Uh, I would like also, close, right, that's closed on that road. Uh, if we try to go back and say minimum maintenance on that road, uh, it's going to be a lot of money and work to get that back up. Uh, that's the one we had last year, where the, somebody had drove down here, they were going to turn around, and she opened gates up, and one of the passers, they went in and kept the fence, turned around and left, and just swept the fence down.
Yeah, Maryland.
Keith, I don't know if you're going to agree on that, uh, I don't know if he's on, the tribe's got some on it, or just they trust, I said it's Q4, 150, 142, or 142. 206 Road, uh, up here, where we had, uh, twice or once again, cut that part of the road, uh, you can classify it as, it's also, uh, 206, Q4 to Q6 is what I would call it, and this goes down to where the bridge washed out. Uh, 178, W4 to X, is wanting to be closed here back in December, and the resolution is supposed to be written up, and Tara worried, and it's never, in the past, and Tara called three months last week about that.
Essentially, I think I got to it when I did.
Okay.
So there was one.
Okay, you just not signed it?
No, she said there was, I, I didn't have to sign it because I don't, I didn't have those in crafts.
I think we held off on the minimum maintenance resolution until we came to...
Right, because these, these figured out.
Okay.
But the, the, 158, W4 to X, uh, we, we closed it, we happened to, that guy was, one put a gate up and surrounded the road, and, and, so, I think a resolution needs to be done on that, because we have to be caught up.
That would be included into the one resolution though, for all I think so.
Um, we got F Road, uh, 142, 150, there's no road there, when you go there, it's just like some, just trees and grass, and see what it used to be. And say with, uh, F 150 to 158, uh, they can, close the road, make a bridge like that, it's probably, or, or, so, and get you guys this list, and you'll look at it, and get that on the...
You'll email it to us?
Yeah. Okay, then Mr. Kelly asked me to get something for him, uh, roads that's on the reservation that we maintain.
So he has said over 70 miles?
Yep. He has this, this list, it's a whiteboard for our wall out there for years, uh, when they sent it to the tribe, they do not recognize this, and so they do not have the memorandum of understanding on any of this, and they don't play accept.
Wait, what do you mean that, when you sent this to them, why would we send it to them?
It's, uh, we're trying to get worked out who's, who's got what.
Okay, and this is, this is all, this is part of the 70 miles?
Yes.
Okay, well, that is, that is...
Here's a bigger map, that, or, yeah.
What was the answer to this, what did he say?
Remember that, what is it, the memorandum of understanding?
But that they do something, or that they're saying there's no agreement, that they do anything, or that's what we...
Yeah, they're saying that there's no memorandum of understanding on these roads, and like I said, this was just on wall out there at the office, uh, saying that, you know, this is the tribal roads that we maintain.
This is a larger map, and then this is...
This is your chemical, Jurassic Road.
And you have, let's, before we leave the roads, we have a cost of what it's costing us per, uh, mile of road to maintain over, over a year, what it's costing us for that.
Just ask me how many miles?
Well, I need, I need a cost, there's got to be a cost associated with it, which...
Maybe it could be an estimate.
Yeah, they say, is it costing $70,000 a year to maintain a mile of road with the greater depreciation, operator, all those types of things, what is it costing us? Even include bridge inspections, those types of things, so you can even...
Yeah, I'll continue on, I'll even have all the due. Uh, 70 miles of road to maintain, order around is 44 miles of culverts on roads...
Additional, additional?
No, there are a couple of orders, 44 miles, plus, 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 plus.
Right, but is that portion, is that part of these miles?
Yes.
So it's part of the 70?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Uh, on our roads that we maintain on the 40 that list, we have 154 culverts, we have nine bridges...
You have that listed in here?
No, it's, uh, it's not. We have 20 boxes, or 100 box culverts that we do, and then, uh, chemicals.
So this is the chemical over the last five years?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The chemicals we sell at cost to them, and actually, we got, in the past couple of years, we send them directly to our vendors, uh, so we don't have to, but before, we even have vendors that come in, we'd have to put it in our inventory and they get it right back out, and then pick it up, uh, like their own pallets and stuff.
So of the, I'm, I'm a little confused. You said the 44 mile perimeter was included in the 70 miles?
Yes.
Okay, you said there was only nine bridges, is there only nine bridges on the reservation or...
No, on the roads that we maintain on, on that list.
Okay.
Only nine bridges, and that, and that's 70 miles that we maintain.
Oh, okay.
Nine bridges.
Out of the 70 miles that they were supposed to be maintaining.
But now we found out that there may be more that we are supposed to maintain.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Let you look. And the list that's there is basically this map wrote down, uh, highlighted in yellow, okay? Uh, this is what we maintain of, uh, next road here, let's skip, we're maintaining this, and then skip again, uh, same one here. Some of these, again, this was, uh, you know, why, we make, we take care of this one piece right here, and then they do this here, I don't know, our greater operator has to cross that road, and just leave that one thing there. Yeah, these, these are the 70 miles that's here, highlighted, you know, and this is a lot of brand in, I mean, right here. This one right there.
Okay.
Okay. 106 and B Road down there, uh, we're putting in the, um, putting in the free head wall too, uh, we pretty much got that wrapped up, and we'll be doing this finish work, uh, today on end, uh, map. Uh, map. Very impressive how this worked, how they pulled it together and, uh, so that's a good thing. Okay. Two Y's, we're heading to R six at one eighteen, uh, we're placing two. Uh, one fifty-eight, S two T, uh, very discussed. The birdies, the Y's all together.
Kind of give an idea of the size of that.
Yeah. Like I said, they've realized workplace and the, the spots are very important horizontal, so you just work it in too. And then, you know, I mean, my doctor this morning was, we're gonna put, uh, a cheap house even. I think it's a, it's a career.
Yeah.
Anyway. Again, you know, there was like twenty-five thousand dollars. That's, uh, versus you are about, well, over.
Yeah. When it's, when it's done, let me know if I can take a look at it.
Okay. I said they're doing the finish bringing them today.
Today. No, shoot me the.
Uh, one oh six and B?
One oh six and.
B is bigger, bigger.
B.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Except for B, alright.
Uh, they're finishing up down there on W road between one ninety-eight, one ninety on the ditching in Washington too. Still have that wrapped up here. Talking to Lily Mary this morning, uh, she's starting to enter the time park into July, uh, this year. And she's still working on it for last year to get into there. Well, I haven't been up here. Uh, here on, they got the, the two culverts put in over there and we talked about that last week. Considered a culvert, uh, W, one ninety-four. Um, so they got in and considered like the water on it really, they're built to the public property. This is, you know, when that happened through, I'm not gonna watch this. It's a little deep question there. And it's, uh, the date interest of crossroads offering and the pledge of the family. And that was kind of, that's a point four inch by forty-five, but. There's more. Uh, so on the land, um.
I don't, I don't.
I check. I check and find out.
How would they do that?
It's a pledge of the will. I tried to point it. Uh, people are running out of their property. Still watching that somewhere. Uh, it's all I got. Uh, you run, I guess you all, I mean, I admit the, uh, like ultimately today, so we're part of a fine gathering. We're like, well, tomorrow, they're gone, out of the way. We've got those two culverts with the driveways. We went in and filled up that burn, uh, by the events, place where his house and it went down. And now he's complaining that it's too big of a burn and wants to do something. Anybody can say like a cop, uh, over the way they, you know, it's down. I think it looks fine. That's all fine. Uh, the slope on the back is, you know, you still know it. It'll be the easiest when you can know it, so. You gotta have the driving, have the.
Do you wanna reach out to him and see maybe?
There you go.
Did their decision?
Didn't. They talked about all the water that's been coming. If we did what we're gonna do, first go around and drive it in all that stuff. We'll go back out there and reconvene everybody and talk again and then came up and put this burn down the side of the hill there. Uh, to prevent the water going into the yard. So it's not gonna go into the yard now. Um, now more of the, the amount of water that's been put there in that's, well, not that much water. It's, it's kind of changed this whole area. So anyway.
Yeah.
If you want the burn changed most of the time, it's, our opinion is it's fine the way that it's, uh. Anything on your own side?
I'm good.
Easy.
Yeah. If you walk into, we have a hot day, you can take that one around there and run it.
Sure, I'll see.
I'd like to see what it does. What it'll help.
Yeah. Like I say, we can talk about different, uh, different applications for patching. Whether it's just the pot tar. And I, I, if we do something like that for the wider cracks, I would not be in favor of purchasing the equipment. I'd be in favor of, uh, subbing that out because I don't think, I don't think it'd be worth it. I'd for, for the few, few cracks we have, I think it'd be better off to, to, uh, looking to subbing that out. So you can look at that and see.
And again, you know, said last week or, we kinda need a guy on the standard that, you know, what are you looking for? Are we just looking to seal the road like they're in the past? The patch that we've drawn ahead of time? Doug places up and put rock in them and back them and things like that. You quieten some areas, you know, pump some, fire rugs. I hope we've done all that in the past before they jump and seal them. Till, till you get the bases built up and they jump and seal them for these and they're almost gonna have.
Yeah.
Issues.
Right. The, the one thing you, you do need to go out and look at that blowout that's out there on the southern end of that blue ground. I mean, I know we said this morning and that was something, but we, uh, look at, take care of probably as a.
So they're playing this up.
Yeah.
He's zero.
Yeah. And this is on chicken seals, so.
That's, um, I guess we need to figure out too, you know, whether we had Brandon, you know, bumped him up to be, you know, project leader and things like that. He wanted to keep this area. And his, like, when we pulled him off, you know, for two, three months on projects, he loses his area. We can do better, I'm sure, but getting that twelfth grader down there to help out. And we, we, Bob, uh, is our only grader alter now that they have a mass group. Uh, because, you know, planning badly with the areas who are up here.
Did they not have anybody in mass crew that can handle the project and let Brandon go back to doing what he's doing?
And then are we going to, I mean, so he's project leader, so we.
I'm just asking.
No, it's not.
Is there?
A lot of force to pay and everything, so that'd be bumping down something.
It would. I would.
Yeah. So what, uh, yeah, we need to look at and see what the best way to do that would be.
To lead and be, you know, is someone else in the firm that are, you know? Well, they're not stuck here right now. They didn't wanna do that. You're, he's there.
Yeah. If he's, if he's that comfortable with that, just gotta be, have a conversation with him and say, okay, you're gonna go back to this blade. And we can't afford to have you outside of your district, uh, this much. That's not gonna work out. So you're gonna go back to this bay and we're gonna move somebody else into that position. It's just a conversation.
Yeah.
And we can't afford to have him out that long. Alright. Thank you all.
Alright. Thank you. Tom, what you got?
Uh, just a few things, uh. A letter to Inmess now. So that was one thing I answered. There were resulting open records requests from last meeting. For information on the resolution twenty twenty-five sixteen. The response was, I mean, they asked for information about things you guys consulted, which would be, if such documents existed, would be legislative documents which are not subject to disclosure. However, you as a body certainly can disclose things if you wish. And essentially like, the, the, the questions were, did you receive complaints? Did you receive, did you do memorandum? Did you have, you know, somebody do something that you can't? That would be one thing is you gotta include information. And the second thing would be, obviously, if I had done a thing and set up, then you could go to turn that over as well. Uh, just because you have a record that's not subject to disclosure does not mean you can release it under court. So, um, I didn't know if that was a special thing to have about whether or not. There are some documents, but they are technically not prior to the passing of the resolution. And I thought it drew me to what we were discussing, the period of time. So it seemed to me, but if you guys wanted to release that, it would be something to do.
Was there, were they really in the minutes?
No, there was two things that were not, um, and that happened to be, again, what we wanted to deal. There are both communications in mind. I tell you, if they wanted communications to a third party, so it's not confidential in that respect, but they didn't ask for conversations with the parties. If they wanted the information, it seems a little bit, that's a big thing to do. Yeah, it was memory. It was what, with the memory, uh, for that.
So then, so what are your concerns about releasing the memorandum?
None for me.
Are?
None for me?
Okay.
I'm actually saying, I'm, I'm in support of releasing those.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm reading over it. I, have you guys looked over the, I don't say anything wrong with releasing the memorandum. I, I have no problem with that.
So since it's an exception, what I'd probably decide to do if you guys are willing, is to, to submit a motion to release. Do two communications to the requesting parties.
Identify a motion to release the memorandum to the requesting parties? We're a second. Probably move and second it to release memorandum dated July fourteen, twenty twenty-five to the concerned parties. Any further discussion?
And, and it's a communication to the representative willpower.
And representing, and the communication to representative willpower. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
My, my take on all of this is, I would put, we send, um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
You would vote to do that?
I voted that we do that. I mean, repeal it. Repeal it. So there's a motion on the floor.
I would second it.
Okay. Probably move and second it to repeal resolution twenty twenty-five dash.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I believe that's the right.
Any further discussion? Yes. I have some discussion on that.
Okay.
Uh, this is something, I'm, I'm gonna kinda ramble here a little bit for putting things together. This is some, this is the resolution that basically puts down in black and white what is already allowed. Uh, the, our appraiser's office has every legal right to walk onto somebody's property. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly.
Well, yeah, that's where. That.
So, so they have no right to go on and do an inspection?
I would question whether or not they have a, a legal right to go on somebody's property for the purpose of inspection. Without permission from the landlord.
Yes.
For the homeowner.
Yeah.
And that's, and remember, we're talking about.
But that, they already have that. I mean, that, that's what, that's what we're getting at here. They have that right now.
Okay.
It's just not in black and white. Am I correct in that?
No, there, no, there's a distinction that, that is important. Meaning that when a governmental entity goes on property, there is a constitutional concern, which is resolved by certain factors in the resolution. But that's a separate question from can anybody, whether it be individual or other, kind of person or just you and me as individuals or whatever, can go on to a property? Uh, and that, the answer to that is not, essentially, you are trespassing. Maybe it's not a criminal trespass because they have a designated, if they don't post it or, you know, those kind of things. But we're still technically legal trespassing. If I walk onto somebody's property or in, you know, Jefferson County, say, just walk on there, I'm trespassing. There's no difference between that and a Jefferson County official doing it if the resolution or code does not say you have the right of entry. So that is the purpose of this was, for that, if it didn't have anything to do with constitutionality, if you said they have the right of entry to inspect. Because otherwise, there could be assertion of illegal trespassing. And that's all. Civil trespass. Criminal trespass, not a fourth amendment violation, nothing. Just can't come home and park. Fair enough.
So have you ever heard of what's called the open field doctrine?
Um, yeah. Yeah. And that's what the, the, the stat, what Supreme Court said essentially was.
Right.
Their legal answer to that, that it's a fourth amendment question. And that's not, that's, you have the right to go and, and a governmental entity has a right to go on them. You got to follow the fourth amendment. I don't know that, and, and maybe that's a distinction I would need to look at because I didn't think of it in the context of, are you trespassing if you're going on, you're an individual going? Right? That's, that's the question. And maybe you.
I don't know. I've just been reading and I feel like we're already covered, I guess. I don't know. The more I read here, I.
Again, I said this last week.
I don't think it's me.
Yeah. Last week. Typically, the only time the appraiser's office or Martha and Kitty and, uh, companies against environmental, if, if they need to go on and do an inspection and someone won't allow them, the appraiser's office is well qualified for that particular program. Building permit revitalization, um, for the building of a lagoon or a lateral field, you know?
But no, the building, if the building, if they had a building permit, the building's already done. You're saying that they don't, you know, they're out of program. What program? The only program they would get out of is revitalization if they signed up for that.
Correct. Revitalization.
Yeah. Well, he just said if they had a building permit and didn't sign up for revitalization and appraiser's office needs to go out and look at it.
If they have a, if they have a building permit.
Uh-huh.
That's, if, if they wanna go out there and inspect the area during the, whatever the, the, the rules are within the building permit, then you pull the building permit. But typically, once somebody applies for a building permit, there is no other inspection. We don't inspect for electricity, water, sewer, electric water. We don't have home inspectors, so.
Right.
Um, really, it just boils down to revitalization. And so if you don't, I mean.
Okay. Okay. Martha, we're, we're-
And I assume this last week is that if we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist-
We're, we're trying to solve a problem, and I don't agree with you on that one, because here's, here's my take on this. We've had people come in here and say, well, you don't have any rules on that. I can do what I want.
Different, different thing.
No, hang on, hang on. It's, it's not a different thing, because in my opinion, this is my opinion, it's not a different thing, because if it's not down and we're trying to put it in black and white so everybody understands, and it's just implied, implied does not work. If it's not in black and white anymore, so we have individuals come in and try to circumvent the understood rules that we've always had.
Give me an example of that.
The two gentlemen who we've had in here before. You don't have any rules for a meeting, so the, so we have the right stuff for those guys.
Give me an example, give me an example of property where the county would have to go on somebody's property to inspect, other than what I'd use it for.
But that's fine, but we've just wrote the rules out, so if everybody understands in black and white, it's not implied.
There's no implication to it. If you want to be in the program, you have to allow it.
So we're just talking about straight revitalization? That's all you're talking about, right?
Or Martha through, or against environmental? I don't know what other instances, and that's what I'm asking you.
Sure.
Is, give me an example of what other instances that, that we would need to be able to give a county employee the, the authority to do that. If there's a crime going on, we're gonna call the sheriff. If there's illegal dumping, we're probably gonna call K D H E and get them involved. Maybe the sheriff's department. I, I mean, I just don't-
But Martha would have to go out, if she had a complaint of illegal dumping, she would have to go out, physically go out there and on the place where there is no permit to be pulled for their sewer, lagoon, whatever. She would have to physically go out there, right?
There are things-
She'd have to go onto the land to look.
Okay.
She doesn't have the right now.
She doesn't, she gets permission. And, and to my knowledge-
Okay, so then if she doesn't get permission, does she just go back to Troy and say, well, let all of you get permission?
Then we, we need to address it from that particular standpoint or that direction versus just giving blanket authority, because I don't think we need that. I don't think we need that blanket authority to do that. I think if, if there's a particular instance, and to my knowledge, in the four and a half years I've been here, I've not, not seen an instance where Martha could not, or one of her employees could not go on a property and inspect. I know there was some illegal sewer dumping down by Mayetta. She was granted permission by the landowner who made the complaint. The other thing is that it doesn't state, I think it's very important that whoever is making the complaint must have a name, a phone number, and an address. There shouldn't be anonymous complaints, but that's a whole nother issue. But I think we can address it in a different way without a resolution, just giving blanket authority.
And if, so, so, okay, I will agree if you want the blanket policy. If that's, if that's, if that was your take on that, and the public's take on that, find it in, let's rewrite the resolution to get it in black and white, because unfortunately anymore, the way that things go anymore is, if it's not in black and white, then it's not a rule. If, if I can do anything I want, if it's not black and white.
Again, I need an example of what that might be, because we've not yet-
Well, I just, I just gave you one, so Martha, Martha, Martha should have the right to go on there, if she gets a complaint, to go look and see.
Without the, uh, permission?
If, if she can't get the information-
I disagree.
Then she should just come up and get the sheriff, just let him go out there.
Why wouldn't the sheriff do anything? Yeah, I'm not sure, but, but we have not had that problem.
We didn't have the problem we had before, until we wrote the rules for the meetings and everything too, right? Did we have that problem?
I, I think they're two completely different situations.
If it's not down in black and white anymore, people do not, do not understand or follow the implied, even if it's for their own benefit. I, you know, if you want to rescind it, that's fine. There's a motion on the floor to rescind in a second.
I think there's a different way we can approach this, but go ahead. Well, that was, I, I wanted to just, I mean, I think, last time we revised it, I didn't find one of the revisions you guys suggested, but I've got those here. And that really is, I, I think, the idea, idea that this gives, that county officers free, free rein, I don't think is intense, and I don't think that you could agree the ordinance of resolution that way in reality, but I understand that. You're dealing with perception and not what it says, because awareness paragraphs, I think clearly say that this is an arm of enforcement, not a, I don't know what you call it, just kind of like inventory system, where somebody's riding around in a car and looking out, so that's not what that was about. That was about, the example you gave, Martha, is probably as good as it gets. I mean, there is a situation on property, there's a complaint, it is in an area of, you know, these jurisdictional items where there isn't somebody who can just say, okay, I'm gonna go on and check it because I have the sheriff. Or whatever, and then it is the duty of the entity, Martha.
Or against black and white.
Anybody under her- Yeah, there's, is she supposed to investigate violations, not just permit? People would come in and say, I want a permit.
Sure.
If there's a violation, it gets you get on there, but it should do if you can't. You should call K D H E, you're right, but K D H E, it's just, well, we're just not gonna, whatever it's a guy that they're doing, instead of going out and complaining. So, you know, and that, that's just, you can, you can go down these things to an entity group, and I'm thinking, the only thing I'm gonna say about it is, is that these are the distinctions I think you're hitting on is a real problem, and this is a policy issue, not the legal issue. Policy issue is whether or not this is deemed some kind of blanket methodology to allow anything and everything versus what you're, but our intent is, and what you're thinking, which is, we gotta have inspection tools to do something when something is an issue. And that, and where we meet on that is, is the entirety of this resolution. So my suggestion is, you have a motion on, you have a second. If we, if we think there's a better way to do this, and maybe some of that is through community input, but really a better way to, um, address this issue, then let's research that, let's figure that, that out. But to just, this resolution for me does not go.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say this, since we're still in discussion portion of it, I'm a little disappointed that we even asked Todd to do this in the first place and waste time and money to do it, because we thought we needed it.
And sometimes we make mistakes.
I understand that.
And I'm willing to admit that, that I don't, at, at this point in time, I don't think it's a good idea, and, and it's okay to-
Sure.
To back up and go, hey, wait a minute, okay, maybe this is overreaching. Let, let's back it up, and let's take a different approach, and let's see, is there another way? There are, there are 105 counties in this state, let's research some of those counties, see what they're doing, see how they're approaching it, maybe there's a better way. And I just don't believe this resolution is the right one, so that's why I, and, and I'm not saying I don't want more conversation, I do, but I think there's a better way to do this.
And we keep bringing up Martha, so she represents four counties. I know, so shouldn't that be done as a four-county thing or something, if we were really doing something to protect her?
That's a great point. How are some of the other counties doing it?
Well, I don't think, I don't think some of the counties are owned or anything else, so you know, whatever, what, that's, that's another conversation in itself, but-
Yeah.
And like I said, there's a motion on the floor and a second, so any further discussion?
Not for me.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye.
Hey. Keep on talking a little bit ago.
Sir, hang on. Do you wanna say something?
Yeah.
I said entertain a motion to add Gary to the agenda?
So, I mean, the subject is this resolution, sir?
You want it out?
The subject, you wanna talk about was the resolution, right?
We don't accept public comment, because this is our business.
Yeah, I just do what you're all talking about.
Yeah, I just wanna get the purpose.
Sure. Okay, cool. Motion on the floor.
I, yeah, I'd, I'd be glad to hear what you have to say.
Okay, is there, there's been a motion on the floor and a second to put Gary to on the agenda? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Gary, go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Kelly, that he's being, can't, no look at, slow down, I think, keep on talking a little bit ago, to maybe ride by, look, think they saw somebody else, think they don't care about him, whatever. Having, on my property, my son bought a family with a little building on it, he was going to somewhere else with it. Anyway, they sat there for probably six months. Somebody else come along, come down my drive, saw that, think, well, that's a building here. Somebody, well, wasn't my building, but possibly may not even been his building. He just delivered it in or whatever. He's there to it, as far as, besides that, on my property, you better call before you come in. I have several area, target areas I shoot at. I don't tell anybody I'm gonna be out target practice or anything else. I own some, I told him several times, let me know you're gonna be there. Because I may be shooting. If I don't know where you're gonna be at, there, let me know. It might be a ricochet, I'm sitting there to rock, but it, it might be a ricochet, and I'm using all the points, cut down the ricochets, that, that could take place. Take the rental place, I told the same thing, let, let me know, somebody's here on the property, but don't get accidentally shot. I've done it one time, not too long ago, I've started practicing, get a phone call, blood left here on the phone with me. Where are you shooting at? Are you here? Yeah. Where are you at? It's down over a damn hill, from where I'm shooting. I'm always looking, I don't shoot the air. I'm turning off, turning off a dog or something, I shoot into grass, I'm shooting in the air, that's a high distance, a mile and a half away, highway 75. Cut down on any kind of accidental shots. That, need to call, or you don't want the property combined anyway. I think that'd be, any courtesy, courtesy for everybody to, the sheriff's, I had my number, they don't have it today, I've called him enough damn times, so anyhow, anyway, my two cents.
All right, thanks, Gary. Appreciate it. All right, Tom, what else you got?
That's it for me. That's my questions. All right.
I have a question.
That's it.
Every year they have to do state the tax rate, the 911. Do we need to do a resolution every year, or is that, do a resolution and say, repeating the 911 tab 675 cents?
So is that, did you ever, does this pass through?
I don't think, I don't know, I couldn't, terrible to shoot anyone in the state, I just, I don't think it's-
I could do this right now, so to find out, so I can go on to more important business.
I have a question, do you get that opioid stuff?
Yeah, I asked about that.
Oh, you did?
No, we've asked about that before.
I have something here that-
Just got emailed that.
I'm afraid it's coming to me, not to you, or what you said.
From the Oklahoma Information Administration, I think it was-
You got it, okay, I can't picture yourself, okay, all right, well, 'cause, did you get that, Chrissy?
Well, I get the information from the reports that I did.
Okay, so you do reports to me then, okay, then I'm gonna work on it.
Did you have Todd, did you have a conversation with the gentleman from Yule's? Not, no kind of position.
Okay. I thought you were gonna contact, uh, Mr. Lee, since he's the chairman of-
Yeah, I did get chased up, but, yeah, I think we're talking about Mr.- Right, so there's, there's some question on that document that we have, whether or not, uh, government planning should be required to fill that out. Yeah. Well, and I think that that was, I think you're right, I don't know if the requirement is, you know, like, they're actually required to fill that out.
I've been, I've been reached out to you by several members of the board who said if they were required to fill that out, they would resign their positions.
Well, there is a directive, at least as far as I know, for on, if they had to fill it out or else, but, and I think we got the response, and we knew about that, so.
Okay.
I don't believe there's a conflict of, of being, being on that board, there's, there's no indication of that, so I just wondered if you- Well, that would probably be, the only thing that would be left, is that there was some information provided-
Sure.
From him, that I could then cover the memorandum, sometimes it says, here's the real rule, and here's the real issue, because we're banning about things that aren't, aren't official conflicts, it's a different process. So, you know, that's, okay, so you can ask, you have to answer that question for, for the rest, so, up with that, and it being another thing. Okay.
Can I ask about a public budget meeting that was, what day was that, Tuesday? Were there a couple people that attended, the conversations and stuff like that? I mean, 21 people, oh.
I was, I was pleasantly surprised with the number of people we had attend, uh, we had 24, 21, 21 people attend.
Right.
Uh, there was good conversation, uh, between the public and all the department heads. I didn't hear any of the department heads complain or anything like that. Uh, the, the feedback that I got from them is that they actually enjoyed the day, that it was, uh, it was very good to get public input and explain what things, you know, what we've done, uh, from the county standpoint and from the department head's standpoint, so it, it went well.
Yeah, when I stopped in for a second, I saw, I don't know, six or seven people in there, so.
Yep, yep, no, it went well, and I was very pleased with the turnout. It's, it's a good start.
Yeah.
Now we'll get more next year.
There was somebody there all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Statute of the 2012, if you're still charging that? Can't see how that happens. The trick would be to me appeal the reception. Very least reception. Do you still have the tax?
Yes. Yes.
You guys have said this before. And that was a change. Yeah, let me, I just probably want to do this on a little better computer. I reckon tracking is a little better, but my guess is that...
Usually get a call this year from... It's not as simple as I could use to, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, that's, it's set here ninety cents per month. So if they're paying seventy-five cents, that's... Is that, I don't see that, you guys have any position in that at all? So, so... So you check it out, but my guess is right now you guys are...
I didn't check that because...
Gary. You ready? Not ready. Okay, second page, or lack of first page. Second paragraph. Public Works Director said that he might drug them down and actually get a lot.
No, they still there.
Oh, that's right.
Pride. Oh, really?
Yeah, that's right.
I love me.
Yeah, they got me second. Uh, down towards the middle of that, this saves the county about twenty-five, this saves about twenty-five thousand dollars for the county. The cost of a new bridge is two-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, and the cost of tubes and head walls, that cost is around twenty-five thousand dollars. Am I correct in that, in what you just said today? The cost of a new bridge is around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and the cost of those tubes and head walls is around twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
That's correct. So that actually saves a lot, twenty-five. Saves about two-hundred-and-fifty. So if you could put a tube in there, that'd be good. Then on the next page each. In the paragraph up there, county does use this for RIP wrap, it's RIP wrap. R-I-P, R-I-P. That's all I had. Anybody see anything else?
I did not.
Okay, we've all read the minutes, Lord July twenty-eighth, I've entertained motion to approve.
Yes.
Yes, properly moved and seconded, approve the minutes July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, any further discussion with corrections? Gary, done, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Vote for Gary. Did you get this from me?
Kristi, did you talk to that?
I got it, I got it.
Okay. Alright. I'm struggling with how to answer these.
What were you talking?
You.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
What questionnaire?
Through research. I mean, we have a conversation about, we can search other counties. And the private sector, go for that.
Yes.
Those are all things that we've done.
I mean, as far as number six, can you claim the department's payroll decisions aligned with current year's budget and projected needs for next three to five years? I mean, I'm, I'm just... Yes, we try to be fiscal responsible and not, we're at a point now where we are, uh, paying...
Competitive?
A competitive wage, it's still not what they're paying in Topeka or Kansas City. But it is competitive with that to where people are actually staying here now, but wanting to work. So I mean, it's like great policy questions, policy, um, you guys. So for three to five years from now, who knows? We can't, we can't predict the future three to five years from now, we're trying to, trying to make the, a sustainable budget. But like... And I think Mr. Brandon's one of us each answer these separately rather than together, I, I'm looking, I'm struggling without it.
It's hard to do it separately when you're, if we're set up on a table. I mean, we have our own pay scale.
I mean, road bridge has a different pay scale than...
Like that quarter doesn't have any employees on there, so she really can't answer.
Yeah.
I think that, I think the simple answer is, yes, we look at wages, uh, we look at how to be competitive in the job workplace. And how to compensate our employees fairly. We look at how many employees we believe we're gonna need today and in the future, based on the workload. And we try to, uh, we try to balance that through our budget.
Yeah.
I mean, that's it in a nutshell.
I mean, because we're looking at across the board, counties whole, where a lot of each are answering this for the department.
I think we look at each department too, I mean...
Yeah, we did.
But, you know, it's more competitive, it's more competitive to hire employees at road bridge than it is in your office.
Yep.
They don't have any problem, they don't have much turnover.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, now that we have, we just got to where they are competitive, we're not having near the turnover at road bridge either.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll take a look at this again. See if I can figure something out, so, I just don't know. I think probably the answer that I'm gonna give him is probably gonna be one that's got all of these lumped together.
Yeah, I see, it kind of just needs to be good.
I mean, I don't know how you guys are gonna answer it, but that's, that's kind of the way I'm going to do it, so. Alright, do we have anything further to come for today?
Can you get it, can you?
Yep. I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out.
Yeah.
Uh, M.I.N.
Okay, I must look up the CD's.
Yeah. You've got that sheet of paper, and then that's written out, it's boring. That, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, that's not.
No, it was laying right there at your desk, it was, uh, with K.C.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Do you remember that? Trying to think what that document was called, was it? That we sent the tribe, the county did, thirty-five years ago, or when it was thirty years ago? I thought Carol came back.
My, I think I have my. Can you remember the, um, what we sent to the tribe several years ago? I think we made a file, so... Do you have a memory of the person? Right. I think I've got five or so. Yeah, I'm not sure.
We need to see if, uh, we need to see if, uh, K.C. has the information for me, but I can, I can... Well, she was gonna put together that map and some other stuff, so, I, I don't know if she's had time to do it, I'll be sure.
They sent it off?
Yeah, they sent her out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Did they receive the question from the hospital?
Good. So they're all sent. Uh, just a reminder, tomorrow night's the sheriff's night out, so we'll be cooking, so... Supposed to be nice evening.
So what kind of meeting?
Uh, he never said, but it starts at five, I believe. So we'll probably get there, I'm probably gonna get there around four, so we can... Get open, start cooking and everything. Let me, anything else? Can you see, is there no further business coming for us today, entertain motion to adjourn? And properly move in second, we adjourn this meeting, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried, meeting adjourned.